The October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council President Lita. Council Pro Temposi.
Here.
Council member Sweeney.
Here.
Council member Driver.
Here.
Council member Murphy. Council member Middlebrooks.
Here.
Council member McClinton.
Here.
All right, with a quorum present, I'll ask the clerk to give the invocation and councilor Driver to give the pledge of allegiance if everyone would please stand.
Hello, everybody. Dear Father, we just thank you for each blessing and each citizen of this wonderful city. I also thank you for giving the counsel, guidance, and wisdom, and then being able to make the best decisions for this city. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to your beloved and holy heavens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every name and justice on earth.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours for proclamations.
We have three proclamations tonight that we would like to present, and first out will be Colonial Heritage Month, and I would like for Ms. Elizabeth Gillian, who's the president, Linda Joseph, Martha Jones, and Karen Schellenberg, if y'all would all please come up as we read this proclamation.
Whereas the George Mayor's chapter of the National Society of Colonial Dames seventeenth century of Alabama is locally sponsoring a National Colonial Heritage Month during the month of October twenty twenty-five, and whereas National Colonial Heritage Month brings to mind the first courageous settlers who arrived in America and who determined the direction for the formation of our country, and whereas the members of this society by virtue of their lineal descendants from those early arrivals feel an obligation to work for the preservation of the priceless legacy that these early arrivals left to all American citizens, whereas they continue to convey the true meaning of the inheritance by reminding us of our privilege to live in a free country has stemmed from loving our country, obeying its laws, respecting its flag, and defending it against all enemies. Now therefore, we Frank V. Brokato, Mayor, and John B. Lita, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover, do hereby recognize October twenty twenty-five as the National Colonial Heritage Month in the city of Hoover, Alabama, and encourage all citizens of the city of Hoover, Alabama, to observe this month as a means of reinforcing the priceless legacy that we inherit with our citizenship in order to help preserve our rich culture and heritage with deep respect for the principles upon which our great country was founded.
Thank you, ladies, we appreciate that. And we now have a very special group, the Down Syndrome Advocacy Month. We would like for Marcella Roberts with her son Joshua, Lauren Waits with her son Beau, Christina Norman with son Landon, Julie Sears with daughter Abby, Henry Mastriani with son Quinn, Yvonne West with daughter Madeline, Andrea Gronden with son Joseph, and Amani and his five family members, if they would all come up just to the front here, we would love to present you with this proclamation.
Whereas Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurring chromosomal disorder and the leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the United States, and whereas approximately one in every seven hundred children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated six thousand births per year in the United States, with approximately eighty-five of those annual births occurring here in Alabama, and whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of our community. Whereas yet despite significant increases in lifespan and intellectual opportunities over the past decade, there is still much work to be done regarding the rights to equality, inclusion, education, medical care, research, employment, and support for people with Down Syndrome, and whereas the city of Hoover encourages all citizens to work together to celebrate the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome, and remember to appreciate and regard every individual with dignity as a valued member of the community, and whereas through public awareness, the city of Hoover supports the initiatives of organizations working to ensure people with Down Syndrome have adequate services or valued by society and can lead fulfilling and productive lives in our community. Now therefore, we Frank V. Brokato, Mayor, and John B. Lita, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover, do hereby recognize October twenty twenty-five as Down Syndrome Advocacy Month in support of individuals with Down Syndrome, as well as their families, advocates, researchers, and medical professionals. We encourage all citizens of Hoover to work together to promote respect and inclusion of individuals with Down Syndrome and to celebrate their accomplishments and contributions.
Public speaking makes me nervous. All right, thank you for having us this evening. Being here allows the Down Syndrome community to be seen. Being seen educates society and helps us make progress. Advocacy is so important, and we appreciate you advocating for us in the city of Hoover. All of our extra chromie homies appreciate you big time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we have another very special group here tonight, support your local Chamber of Commerce. We have Ms. Nan Baldwin, who is our president and CEO, Jonathan Carter, Vice Chair, Aaron Dietlin is our legal advisor, Kimberly Jackson, Board Chair, Vivian Moore, Board Director, Rowan Pahr Bandawala, immediate past Chair, James Robinson, retired executive and Board Director, and Andy Tatum, Account Executive. If y'all would all please come up and let us read this proclamation in honor of our chamber.
Whereas the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce, established in nineteen seventy-eight, is a nonprofit organization dedicated to addressing the business community's top challenges and greatest opportunities through bold leadership and innovation problem solving, and whereas chambers of commerce across the nation, including the Hoover Area Chamber, foster stronger, more vibrant communities by advocating for priorities that promote economic prosperity, enhance quality of life, and create access to meaningful employment opportunities for all residents. Whereas the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce serves as a trusted resource and champion for Hoover's businesses, residents, and stakeholders, creating catalytic partnerships that build resilient economies and promote community-wide prosperity. Whereas the Chamber's mission is to serve as the catalyst for economic growth by fostering cooperative partnerships and advocating for its members and stakeholders, while its vision is to strengthen the city of Hoover as a leading community with thriving businesses and top talent. Whereas the Chamber continues to support small and mid-sized businesses resulting in community-wide prosperity and a stronger local economy with a growing membership and a legacy of impact initiatives that benefit the entire Hoover area. Now therefore, we Frank V. Brokato, Mayor, and John B. Lita, City Council President, and on behalf of the residents of the city of Hoover, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Support Your Local Chamber of Commerce Day, and encourages the businesses, residents of Hoover, and neighboring communities to support the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce and learn more about its vital impact on our local economy and quality of life.
Well, good evening, Mayor Brokato, members of the city council, and everyone assembled here today. On behalf of the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors that you saw standing before you, as well as members of our staff, thank you for this proclamation and recognizing Support Your Local Chamber Day, which is on Wednesday, October fifteenth. We're honored to serve this incredible city, which is the sixth-largest city in the state of Alabama, the second-largest in Jefferson County, and the largest in Shelby County. We have the unique honor to work every day to support the businesses that help make Hoover thrive. Our mission is to be a catalyst for economic growth by building partnerships and advocating for our members. In simple terms, we help businesses grow, connect, and lead. Through networking events, educational seminars, promotional opportunities, and advocacy, we give our members the tools to succeed and to help shape the future of our community. As we celebrate Support Your Local Chamber Day, I invite any of you out there, there are local businesses, owners, all types, whether you be small, medium, or large, and any professional, to get involved with the Chamber, to network among other businesses, promote your business, expand your knowledge on issues impacting your business, and shape Hoover's future through business advocacy. Again, thank you, Mayor Brokato, and council, for your partnership and for your commitment to a strong and thriving business community by supporting the Hoover Area Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much.
All right, before we move into regular business, I want to recognize Mr. Smith, Ms. Lovell, and Mr. Schultz, your incoming council members who are here with us tonight. Two more weeks and it's your turn. And I would like to especially recognize Mr. Everett Franklin. He had some comments he wanted to come up and make, come on up.
My name is Everett Franklin. I am seven.
I believe you. You're seven? Tell him where you go to school. You got it. It's scary to speak. You want me to read what you wrote?
Don't be nervous at all. Doing a good job.
You're good. He wrote a speech, it says, "My name is Everett Franklin, I am seven, I go to school at Rocky Ridge, my favorite sport is baseball, and I like playing." What do you like playing? Can you hold it up? No? First base. "My friends and I miss playing at Hoover East. On behalf of the east side of Hoover, please vote tonight to fully fix the ballpark." Thank you.
All right, now that I got my glasses on so that I can see, we will start with the consent agenda, and I will begin by taking off the payment, the number one, the minutes, as requested by a citizen before the meeting. So, Mr. City Attorney, if you'll read the consent agenda minus number two.
Item one approves the payment of bills. Item number three is Resolution eight-six-one-seven-two-five, which approves of zero-four-zero retail beer on or off premises alcohol license and zero-six-zero retail table wine on or off premises alcohol license for Birmingham Hospitality LLC doing business as Hampton Inn and Suites located at sixty-two-twenty Farley Court, Hoover, Alabama. Item four, Resolution eight-six-zero-eight-two-five, authorizes Mayor Brokato to execute a renewal of health services agreement with QCHC of Alabama LLC for the provision of inmate healthcare at the municipal jail. Resolution eight-six-oh-nine-two-five, authorizes the mayor to execute a transit services agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority for mass public transportation services in the city of Hoover, Alabama. Resolution eight-six-one-zero-two-five, authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver a change order for an increase of two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars for a new contract sum of three million, seven-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents for ALDOT project number IM-one-four-five-nine, parentheses, three-two-five, for the new interchange on I-459 near exit nine. Resolution eight-six-one-one-two-five, authorizes the mayor to resubmit a lease agreement with the Alabama Department of Revenue for office rental space. Resolution eight-six-one-two-two-five, authorizes the mayor to execute three change orders for bid number twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two Hoover Fire Station One as follows. Change order number twenty-one for an increase of one-hundred-eighty-four dollars. Change order number twenty-two for an increase of eighteen-thousand, sixty-seven dollars and forty-two cents, and change order number twenty-three for an increase of two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Before we vote, are there any council members, or before we entertain a motion, any council members wish to remove any items on the agenda? Any one in the audience? Yes, ma'am. Number six, okay? Please note, Madam Clerk, we're removing number six as well to the regular agenda. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
So a motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda minus item two and item six, pass. We'll go to our regular agenda, starting with item number two.
Mr. President, just one comment. Thank you, King Grimes, for the information you sent on ridership. And Highway thirty-one is what we fund, and about ten thousand riders annually. Thank you for the information.
All right, so moving on to regular agenda with item number two, the minutes.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes for the meetings of September eighteenth, September twenty-second, September twenty-fifth, and October second.
Second.
I have a motion to second from the council. Any discussion on this item from the council? Any from the audience? Yes, sir.
Tell that young man I feel the same way every time I get up here to talk. Matt went through Scout Creek Drive. Minutes are important and their accuracy is important, and there's quite a few mistakes in these minutes, I believe. I'm looking at draft two, which was provided as part of the packet. We have people, president meetings, that weren't at the meeting have, I don't know, some kind of less important things like an invocation and pledge during a work session, which never happens. The bills were never approved as a part of the meeting on September eighth. Minutes weren't approved either. This kind of underscores the importance of having the videos to be able to look back at, and if we don't have the videos, these are the only record. So I'll give you all these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to continue the minutes for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and October second, twenty twenty-five, to the call of the chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second to the call of the chair. Any comments from the council? Any from the audience? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This item is continued to the call of the chair. And the next item will be Resolution number eight-six-one-zero-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute and deliver a change order for an increase of two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand for a new contract sum of three million, seven-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents for ALDOT project number IM-I-459-three-two-five for the new interchange on I-459 near exit marker nine.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution number eight-six-one-zero-dash-two-five.
Second.
I have a motion to second this item. Any comments from the council on this item? Any from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I didn't know I was going to be up here, but I did have a couple of concerns. My name is Elizabeth Gunther, G-U-E-N-T-H-E-R. I'm a resident of Lake Cyrus. This interchange project is affecting the edge of my neighborhood, the Cove part, already. I knew about that. My concern is, I'm hearing three million, I'm hearing add three hundred thousand, just, okay, well, let's just do it. Well, I'm concerned because we have two weeks before we have some new council members to come into the council, and I'm just, I'm concerned about the rush to do the vote, to just, you know, rubber stamp all these improvements. It said it was a change order, well, I thought the project was already kind of in place. Why are we paying for change orders? And how much will the Hoover City be on the hook for, for the change orders? And then what else is going to be happening? So I have concerns that perhaps there needs to be, postpone this vote, maybe discuss it more and allow the new folks that are going to be sitting with you to have some input and maybe some fresh eyes. So, that's basically it. Thank you.
We have someone that could speak to the change order and give us some information on why we have a change order with this item. All right, thank you.
Yes, the change order before you is for some scope items that were not initially included in the scope of work for the exit nine project, some fiber lighting and fire station, and we've upped our schedule of our monthly, bi-weekly meetings with the DOT so that we can keep exit nine on schedule for the first quarter of twenty twenty-six. So these are just some items that were not in the original scope, and as part of the agreement with the DOT, the city of Hoover is responsible for the consultant engineering costs.
Any questions from the council on the change orders, any information that's presented?
Do we have an idea of the cost?
Of the...
Of the change orders?
This should be the final change order. It's two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars is what's being requested, so that it should be the last change order.
I do want to mention that it is important that we keep this project on track to bid first quarter of twenty twenty-six. It's already been delayed numerous times, so that may be part of the expediency of voting for these items.
And that's correct.
Any further questions or comment from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing, seeing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Now we will move to item number nine, which is Resolution number eight-six-one-three-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokato to execute an agreement with Alabama Power Company for a utility easement distribution facilities at Hoover East Sports Park.
Motion. Okay, second.
I have a motion to second this item. Any comments or questions from the council on this item?
I'd like the record to reflect that I will abstain from voting on this item.
Okay. Madam Clerk, did you hear the abstention? Okay. All right. Any from the audience on this item? We heard from Everett earlier on this item and the next two, so he wants us to get this done. Hearing, seeing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All right, we'll move on to item number ten, Resolution number eight-six-one-four-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokato to execute a prepayment of goods and services for transformers and related installations at Hoover East Sports Park for power restoration as required by Alabama Power.
Motion to approve Resolution number eight-six-one-four-dash-two-five. Second.
Motion on the second item is related to number nine and number ten, it appears. Any questions from the council on this item?
Mr. President, I'll abstain from this item as well.
Please note that abstention. Any questions from the audience? Hearing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Let's move on to number eleven, Resolution number eight-six-one-five-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five, for the Hoover East electrical repairs as shown on Exhibit A.
Motion to approve Resolution number eight-six-one-five-dash-two-five. Second.
I have a motion to second. Any questions from the council on this item?
One more abstention, Mr. President.
One more abstention on that one. Any from the audience? Hearing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The ballpark will be started on its journey to be back up and running for Everett and his friends. Moving on to item number twelve, Resolution number eight-six-one-six-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Central Alabama Water to install five fire hydrants in the foothills of Black Ridge Residential Development Phase for, at the following location, the intersection of Eastview Lane and Black Ridge Circle, the intersection of Burnham Place and Black Ridge Circle, lot four-thirty-five, Black Ridge Circle, lot four-twenty-four, Black Ridge Circle, and lot four-oh-five in Black Ridge Circle.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution number eight-six-one-six-dash-two-five.
Second.
A motion to second.
Mr. President, I shall abstain from this vote.
Another abstention, Madam Clerk. Anything else from the council on this item? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Move on to number thirteen, Resolution number eight-five-eight-seven-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Shoal Engineering for flood plain management consultation for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution number eight-five-eight-seven-dash-two-five.
Second.
A motion to second. Any questions on this item from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing, seeing, none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, moving on to Resolution number eight-five-seven-one-dash-two-five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for the operation of a Fusakli's Restaurant, including drive-through, located at fifty-five-fifty-two Grove Boulevard pursuant to the conditions included as Exhibit Two to the resolution.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution number eight-five-seven-one-dash-two-five.
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Martin.
Yes, this conditional use is for a quick-service restaurant to locate at the address five-five-five-two Grove Boulevard, one of the last remaining out parcels at the Grove Shopping Center. The location is on PC Plan Commercial, and this would be comprised of an approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-seat quick-service restaurant with drive-through service. The planning commission... The Planning Commission reviewed this application at their September meeting and bring to you a positive recommendation for approval contingent on the following items: One, the submittal of a tree conservation plan in keeping with the provisions of Article 13 of the zoning ordinance at time of permitting; Two, site civil and building plans will be substantially in conformity to the plans and specifications of the conditional use submittal; and Three, the business shall obtain a certificate of occupancy and business license prior to opening. The comprehensive plan supports commercial development in the vicinity.
All right. Any comments or questions from the council on this item? Any from the audience? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll move on to Resolution number 8572-25. Mr. Corley.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for the development of a medical office building with a surgical center for the property located in Perdoo Place within the Stadium Trace Village Phase Two development, subject to the conditions included as Exhibit Two to the resolution.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution number 8572-25.
Second.
A motion and second. This is also a public hearing, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Yes, this conditional use application is for an approximately 80,000-square-foot outpatient surgical center and medical office building to be located in the Phase Two of Stadium Trace Village, which is just to the south of the current Stadium Trace Village on an extension of Perdoo Place. This conditional use, in addition to approval of the use itself, would constitute an approval of additional height onto the building beyond the 60-foot mark permitted by Wright in the C2 zoning district. So we are looking at a 72-foot-tall structure. Zoning ordinance does permit increase in height with conditional use approval. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their September meeting and comes to you with a positive recommendation for approval contingent on the following: One, that the site civil and building plans substantially conform to the plans and specifications of the conditional use submittal; Second, that all recommended improvements in the traffic study submitted for Stadium Trace Village Phase Two and the developments therein are constructed to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy; Third, future additions and site alterations will require new conditional use applications; and Four, the business shall obtain certificate of occupancy and business license prior to opening. The comprehensive plan supports commercial development in the vicinity.
Any questions from the council on this item? Any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, next we will move to ordinance number 252681. Mr. Corley.
This ordinance authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Jefferson County, Alabama, for sidewalk improvements on Shades Crest Road and Sulphur Springs Road.
I'll entertain a motion on this for immediate consideration.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of this item.
Second.
Okay, with the motion to suspend the rules, in a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote from the city clerk.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Counselor McClinton?
Aye.
Counselor Posey?
Aye. With seven ayes and zero nays, we will now consider this item. Six and zero, I'm sorry. We'll now consider this item.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number 25-2681.
Second.
A motion and second. Any questions from the council on this item? Any from the audience? Hearing seen none, I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Counselor McClinton?
Aye.
Counselor Posey?
Aye. Six ayes, zero nays, the ordinance passes. Now we move on to set public hearings for first item, Resolution number 8596-25.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 2024 Arnold Road, Hoover, Alabama, with a public hearing on October 27th, 2025.
It appears that this one will end up being withdrawn based on the notes that I have. Is that correct, Mr. Martin?
That is my understanding from our code enforcement official.
Okay, we'll just make a note of that. Then Resolution number 8597-25.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 2137 Lynn Gate Drive, Hoover, Alabama, with a public hearing on October 27th, 2025.
Mr. Martin, anything on this one?
This one is still in violation as of this time, and request it to move forward towards the abatement hearing.
Okay, and then number 19, Resolution number 8598-25. It says here that it will not be on the agenda, it needs to be withdrawn.
That's correct.
Okay, we'll make a note of that one as well. And then Resolution number 8599-25. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 3500 Ridge Crest Drive, Hoover, Alabama, with a public hearing on October 27th, 2025.
This one is still in violation as of today, and requests move forward with the abatement hearing.
Finally, Resolution number 8600-25. Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the abatement of a weed or other vegetation nuisance at 3558 At Von Drive, Hoover, Alabama, with a public hearing on October 27th, 2025.
This one also is still in violation, and we request the abatement hearing move forward.
All right, we'll have two that luckily they got cut and they're done, and maybe these other three will have the same luck by then.
Fingers crossed.
All right, anything from the council this evening before we adjourn? Anything from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hoover is required by permit to develop a stormwater management program. Develop it. Hoover has an expensive MS4 consultant, Dwayne Smith, at Hydro Engineering Solutions. Hoover's MS4 reports are not accurate. They are the same from year to year. Hoover's MS4 annual evaluations are identical to Mobile, Montgomery, and Prattville. The handout provides evidence for these concerns. The requirement that the stormwater permit is to show development or progress is particularly important. As you can see, there was no proposed change between 2017 and 2023, if you look at pages two through four in your handout. Even October the 6th, 2021, did not change the plan. This is bonkers. No progress. The Hoover MS4 reports are similar from year to year, as you can see in those pages. For example, weaknesses are all external. Hoover accepts no blame and no responsibility. One category of weakness: regulatory requirements. It's ADEM's fault. Enforcement: it's the residents' fault. Public expectation: once again, the residents' fault. Funding: Hoover doesn't have enough money for infrastructure. Upstream water quality: it's Vestavia's fault, never Hoover's fault. An annual strength for Hoover is city leadership actively supports the stormwater program. Now, that sounds pretty good, doesn't it? Hoover reports are very similar, if not identical, to those from Montgomery, Mobile, and Prattville. A strength for Mobile: city leadership actively supports the stormwater program. Sounds a little less sincere now. ADEM has concerns about the reports for all four cities. What is the common factor for all four cities? Dwayne Smith and Hydro Engineering Solutions. He is a consultant that in fiscal year 2025, we paid over $280,000. For context, in that same timeframe, we paid, we put out, rather, in the budget, $300,000 for repairs of stormwater. Hydro Engineering Solutions seems to operate under your radar because they're paid from, the consultants are paid from stormwater fees that we pay, each property owner pays, so you don't know necessarily what's going on. Those fees are supposed to do two things: provide for our safety, our health, our welfare, and finally, to meet permit requirements. The excess spending is doing neither. Dwayne Smith and Hydro Engineering Solutions are not working in our best interests. This whole thing is bonkers.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Okay, if not, we'll...